Evening, everyone. My name is David Fries and the mayor of Tongonoxi. I would like to call this September 10th, 2021, regular meeting to order. Mr. Porter, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. McCutcheon.
Here.
Ms. Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Fries.
Here.
Mr. Hempel.
Here.
Mr. Dale.
Here.
Mr. Donnelly is absent. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Would you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. First up is item two, the approval of minutes. Anyone have any additions, corrections, discussion, or a motion on the minutes?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ms. McCutcheon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously on a voice vote. Item three is the consent agenda, the review of the bill payments. Anyone have a question, concern, discussion, or a motion to approve?
I'll motion to approve.
Thanks, Ms. McCutcheon.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously on a voice vote. Mr. Porter, did we have anyone here for open period?
We do have one sign up, mayor. If you'd like to come forward and state your name and address, then you'll have three minutes.
Sir, if you're not familiar with the process, we have a three-minute limitation on that, and that's a hard three minutes. So we'll, I'll give you a one for one minute, a fist for 30 seconds, and you can go. All right, thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Reverend Mo Doer. Western Kansas here last fall to Tongonoxi because I had some friends up in this area. I am a retired Kansas social worker for 32 years. This past Fourth of July, Independence Day, was the most horrific I have ever experienced in my life. The reason is because not only did I have PTSD, but I have interviewed over 22 households, 17 were veterans also with PTSD. They were also feeling very horrified and very degraded by the city allowing the discharge of fireworks. I had brought an example or a sample and left it with the officer of a miniature dynamite that one person on 624 East Seventh was using with a cannon in his front yard. Two blocks away, our windows were shattered. That officer has that explosive in his wellum to dispose of it at your convenience because I do not want that. And I noticed that in your July council that you also had a code. I would like to know, and I'm sure other residents would like to know, why you have codes if people did not obey that. This resident was using these fireworks from June 25th to July 11th. Many called the police as well as I did, and nothing was done to him. He was highly intoxicated constantly out on the street when he was doing that. Nothing was ever done. I even showed photographs of his car trailer filled with debris from fireworks in the neighbor's yards, and nothing was done to him. So what we want to know is why you have codes if they're supposed to be like laws and nobody obeys them. What we would like, I would like to just share with you, one of the couples. One of the couples had a very horrific experience. They were celebrating their 50th wedding anniversary. Their children bought him a dog, a certified registered dog, for over $300. The dog ran out through the door, ran out through the fence, and chewed the metal fence so bad that his mouth was completely disgruntled, bleeding so bad that the vet had to be called, be put down. That is no way to celebrate a 50th wedding anniversary. So we ask next year, whoever's on the council, please do not allow the discharge of fireworks within our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service as well. Mr. Brackovich, could we maybe review, or maybe you could review with the chief, our fireworks issues? I don't know what there is that we could, can do, but certainly no one has stopped shooting off fireworks where I live. So, near where I live, so I don't know. Can we review the policy, review the codes, or something like that?
Sure, we can circle back with PD. I believe the code allows for only the discharge of a certain type of firework without a license, and so there are components of this we can review.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, do you have any other questions for staff or the gentlemen?
No.
Okay. I appreciate you speaking up, sir. Thank you very much. Is that it for open period?
Mayor, we also have Monica Ghee here.
Oh, great.
Monica Ghee, 17685, 214th Street. I just wanted to give you an update. Tongonoxi, in my opinion, was a good success. We had 47 vendors at the end, six food trucks.
Yeah.
The games were wonderful. The church wants to do them again. They started out with 200 punch cards for kids to do all of it, and they ran out of those by 11:30, two and a half hours before they were done. They estimate they had over 500 kids because they started just making tallies. So that is a huge turnout for them. So we're pleased with that. FFA loved having their farm animals. We got good feedback on that. T-shirt sales were average. I don't think they were great, but being a first year doing that, we didn't know what to expect. Let's see, Jenny, do you have anything else? Because most of you were there. Oh, the bands were fabulous.
Yeah, the bands were excellent.
A lot of feedback on that. We had 24 cars at our car meet. So that's a, that's partially a success considering there's 2,500 in Ottawa the same weekend. So I think we did pretty good. We've had nothing but good feedback from our vendors. Only one said they wouldn't come back. They didn't give a reason because we did a survey. So we'd be more than happy to share all that, and by next council, we'll have a budget workup of what we spent, ready for you. Any questions?
Counsel, do you have any questions?
I would just like to add, as a downtown business owner, we had a fantastic evening. I mean, a lot of people just being downtown, people from out of town who had never stepped foot in our business, came in and were like, wow, this town is great. We really like coming here, and they said that they would be back. So we appreciate having the event downtown and specifically like right on 4th Street. It was nice, and a lot of people said, oh, yeah, this is the way I remember it. So I appreciate that effort.
Thank you. And we did talk with Rustic Heffer and Genie's Formal. They had record sales that day. Rustic Heffer said they doubled what they've ever made in any one day.
That's great. Anyone else, counsel? I've heard nothing but good things. I've stayed off of social media, but verbal and emails, all positive. I appreciate y'all's professionalism and your drive and your passion for this event, and y'all did great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any more, Mr. Porter?
No others, mayor. Thanks.
All right. We'll move on to old business, and there is nothing listed under old business. We'll move on to part five, new business. The 2020 Audit Report and Presentation by Karen Lynn of BT and Company. Dan, I believe you had this one.
Thank you, mayor. I'm excited to introduce Karen Lynn and Kyle George from BT and Co., our auditing firm for this year and the next two fiscal years. They've worked with us closely in the past several months to help develop the draft report provided to you this evening and earlier in the agenda packet. And Karen has a short presentation and staff, and I'm sure her and Kyle are glad to answer any questions you have tonight or at any time. And I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you. Good evening. I appreciate the few moments of your agenda this evening to go through the results of the audit. Two documents that are, come out of the audit. One is the financial statements themselves with our opinion attached. The second one is the report to the city council. I'm going to spend my comments going through that document, the report to the city council, because that document has the conclusions and the results from the audit, which are the items that you really can only hear from me as your auditor. So I'm going to go through that, just starting past the table of contents. Our responsibility, after we're hired to perform the audit, is to perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards issued by the Controller General of the United States, the provisions of the Single Audit Act Uniform Guidance, and OMB's compliance supplement, and the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide. The, the first one that I mentioned there, auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, are the standards that we perform all audits, that we do. Those are the standards that we apply to all audits. Those standards require that we plan and perform the audit with the objective of forming an opinion as to whether the financial statements are free of material misstatement. So we design our audit with that objective in mind. We were able to issue an unmodified opinion, which does state that, in our opinion, the financial statements are free of material misstatement, and that is the best form of opinion that you can receive on financial statements. These financial statements are on the regulatory basis, which is the basis that the state of Kansas allows all municipalities within the state to, to, to select for the financials. The other ones that I mentioned, government auditing standards, provisions of the Single Audit Act Uniform Guidance and OMB's Compliance Supplement, are because of the federal dollars that you've received and spent during the year. That the single audit was a new requirement this year because you spent over $750,000 of those federal expenditures. So that required additional compliance and internal control testing that we performed during the audit, and the conclusions from that, which are detailed in the financial, the financial document towards the end. There were no findings, no internal control deficiencies that we identified. So all very positive conclusions coming from that test work. Other items that we test as a part of our audit, in addition to the items that you would normally think of, the testing of expenditures and receipts, are items that we, that we normally would test. We also look at accounting policies. We look at them to make sure that they are appropriate, that they're consistently applied, and that there's nothing unusual that we should bring to your attention. Also, if there's any significant or unusual transactions, similarly, we would look that they're appropriately accounted for and that there's nothing unusual that we need to bring to your attention. Also, if we during the audit identified any audit adjustments to the financial statements, we would bring those to your attention by attaching those to this document. There was one very, very minor adjustment, and it's attached here, and you can, at your convenience, you can take a look at that adjusting entry. As I indicated, it's very insignificant in terms of overall dollars, but it is provided there for your information. We would also bring to your attention if we had any issues or problems during any part of the audit process. Things like disagreements about accounting matters, disagreements about auditing process. For example, if we asked for items during the audit, during the time we're here for the audit, and it was not provided to us, if it was refused to us. Things like that would be indications of a red flag of more serious issues in, you know, in that entire financial accounting, and we would make sure that you were aware of that. So nothing, nothing at all that we need to bring to your attention. And as a matter of fact, if it would have been anything like that, we would have brought it to your attention much earlier than today. So quite the opposite. We had great cooperation. Everyone was very prepared for us. Dan and George, you know, just did everything that they could to make sure that the process went very well, and we are able to, you know, have this report ready much earlier than we did last year. And so, you know, the process went very well, and we're still dealing with working in a remote environment to a certain extent because of the pandemic, and, and, and we do appreciate all the work that you went through to, to help get the audit done in a very efficient process. So the last item that I want to bring to your attention is the letter that is just beyond that last page, there are not page number two. This letter is management's representation letter. It's required by our audit standards. It requires us to have things in writing that we discuss during the audit process, things that are underlying the financial statements and financial accounting policies. A lot of information in this letter that helps support the financial statements. As you read through the financials and read through this letter together with it can help you understand and digest the financial statements that much more. So we do encourage you to read through this letter. It's, it is quite lengthy. The single audit, extra test work that we performed this year did add quite a bit to this letter. But as you read through this, if you have questions about it, if there's anything in there that you, that you want further explanation, please route those questions to us. We'd be happy to, to answer those. But we do believe that's good information to help you as you fulfill your fiduciary responsibility towards financial accounting matters, and so we do encourage you to read through that. So with that, I would answer any questions that you have about the, the conclusions or about the process. And as I indicated, all of the conclusions from the audit were, were positive conclusions, so.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Counsel, do you have any questions?
No.
No? Okay. Excellent work. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
There was no action needed on that, correct? Thank you. Item B, Consider or Approval of Committee Recommendation for Website Update. Project vendor, Mr. Brackovich?
Yes, thanks, mayor. So there is a memo that outlines the process we utilized here. Excuse me. And you'll probably recall that in early August, or the first council meeting in August, staff presented a draft RFP that we wanted to go out for services related to website design and implementation. And the council approved that, and so we released the RFP the next day. One other action item that was discussed that night was to form a review committee and ask for a couple of volunteers from the city council to serve on that. And Ms. McCutcheon and Mr. Dale graciously offered to do that. And so we released the RFP, had significant amount of interest. We ended up receiving a total of 16 submittals. What the review committee did, we met remotely via Zoom and some emails. But we developed a matrix. Mr. Porter put together a scoring matrix that allowed each of us to individually review those 16 to come, come up with a tier of top three to five submittals, and then we compared notes on that. From that, we advanced a top three that was a cumulative-type agreement, and we used our existing IT consultants to do a quick technical review of those three submittals to make sure they were technically sound. Once we got there, we proceeded with setting up interviews. We did do interviews with two top firms, and we learned a lot along the way from content management systems, what's open source, Drupal, WordPress versus proprietary. And I'm sure that both the, the council members would be ready to give you any detail you would like on that. And, and at the end of the day, we reviewed it, and there were some benefits. Custom, custom work versus what other municipalities are doing. At the end of the day, we looked at the factors that are highlighted in the memo to advance recommendation to go with Civic Plus. And those factors that we considered and favored Civic Plus's submittal were the ability to flex to a smaller governmental entity. In fact, they have a small government branch. That's who we were communicating with. They have an office in Manhattan, Kansas. We also talked about open source content management systems and the benefits of that. Recognition of outstanding customer service. They've won numerous Stevie awards, which I wasn't familiar with and wouldn't expect you to be either, but it's, it's recognition for their level of customer service in the field. And then they had existing municipal clients, because again, at the end of the day, whether it's in Tongonoxi or any other city, people typically come to the web, city's website to find a form, ask a question, find out meeting information, look at documents. And so those are the things that, even though we'd like a unique appearance to our website, I bet if we did a heat analysis of what people are hitting our website on for now, those are probably going to be among the top choices. And so developing a system with an experienced group like this that will ultimately lead into ease of use for our citizens and anybody looking for information on Tongonoxi is what we're looking for. And, and really, the final two factors were of the top choices, the cost and the timeline for implementation. I'll start with timeline. This firm suggested somewhere 12 to 15 weeks. The other top firm was at 30 weeks, so this is about half the time. And on cost, as we developed the 2021 budget in the previous year, we allocated $15,000. This is, as submitted, is $9,500. So it's coming in under the, the proposed budget, or the available budget we have for the project. And, and so again, that's the recommendation we're making, is to move forward now. Their Civic Plus included some optional items that we've been kind of exchanging information on in terms of cost. Things like, some communities have like a 3-1-1 system where you can call for non-emergency items, and it starts a database. So someone calls with a complaint, street light is out, a pothole hasn't been repaired. What it does, it allows staff to manage that from start to finish, so we know how many calls we got, what were the nature of the call, how long does it take to repair it? Is it a city repair? Is it a repair we're coordinating with another utility company? And another key component that we're interested in is a agenda management system. So kind of for meetings like this and documents that go with that, how do we make those easily available? I mean, right now, we're not too bad with the way our website's set up, but there's always room for improvement. And so we're trying to get an idea of what those additional costs would be. The reason we didn't flush that out a little bit more and come with the total cost is because of timing. It is a 12 to 15-week process. One thing that complicates it, and we asked this to both firms we, we talked to, is where we're starting in terms of where we are in the year. So our funds are allocated for this year, and that's not really as big of an issue. But when you start accounting for Thanksgiving and Christmas and a big holiday package, it, it's hard to coordinate the needed city staff as well as with your contractor to get all that done. So we thought the sooner we could get started, even if we had all of October, that'll give us at least that much more advantage as opposed to discussing a few more items. But I throw all that out because there is a potential that if we find something that we'd want to come back to the city council, recommend, I didn't want it to be a surprise if we came back before the end of the year and said, we'd like you to consider maybe purchasing this extra module or these two extra modules if, if, if the pricing is right. But again, before you tonight is the, the proposal as submitted that should have been included in your packet. And staff, Dan and I would be happy to answer any questions. And like I said, I'm sure the, the city council folks that served on the committee would be happy to as well.
Thank you, Mr. Brackovich. Committee members, do you have anything to add?
George did a great job.
I'm sorry?
George did a great job.
Ultimately, for me, I think when coming down to, to my top three, my thoughts were, I, I looked at some of the samples, some of the examples that they gave, and looked for things that were unique, that were more creative. Maybe, you know, things that might set us, set our side apart from others a little bit more. I feel that this group has that capability. We had three top teams to interview. One of them had recently been acquired by this group, so we took them off the list, so we interviewed two. And the other guys were out of Michigan?
I think Florida. They were east coast based, yeah.
So the other group was out of Tallahassee. This group is out of Manhattan, Kansas. You know, it's a, it's a local company. So personally, I feel, I feel good about them. And I, I do want to point out, as I understand it, the 9,500 is the first cost for this year, but then there is, is it a three-year agreement on, on these guys?
So that, we did ask for the RFP specifically for design and implementation of the new system, but then we wanted to have an idea of what the ongoing costs were for either maintenance or just the annual service fee, for lack of a better term. And, and so they gave us, I think, cost projections for at least a three-year period. They might have gone even further, but I, I think we had some that gave three years and some that gave a little further beyond that.
And it's something like 20, 2,500 or 2,100, something relatively nominal. But I just wanted to point that out, too, because there is some ongoing costs. It's not a one-time thing. We never talk about it again, so.
Okay, counsel, any questions? So what's the motion? Do you, do you want the motion to authorize 9,500 in spending or 15,000 in spending?
I, I think for tonight, we can do the 9,500. Like I said, I just wanted to add the other components that in case we come back before the end of the year, I didn't want it to be, it wasn't a sales pitch we were hearing along the way. It was, we just would like a little extra time to review that and determine if there's a real value to us in those other components.
Makes sense. All right. Any other discussion? Not, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Civic Plus for the design and implementation of the city's new website.
Is there a second?
Ms. Stevens, would you like to add the $9,500 to your motion?
I can.
Okay.
Not to exceed $9,500.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Hempel. It's been moved and seconded. Dan, would you call the roll for the vote, please?
Ms. McCutcheon.
Yes.
Ms. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Mr. Dale.
Yes.
All ayes. Mayor, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Next up is the item C, Mayor's Tree Lighting Event, Community Event Planning Update. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to introduce this event and some of the draft programming that the Event Planning Committee, which is, I think, our largest committee of number of members in the prior, at least four years. They've been working very hard, met several times, and added a lot of good input that I think is going to help make this year's event a really outstanding one for all attendees. Traditionally, as you'll recall, the mayor's tree lighting has occurred the first Saturday prior to Thanksgiving. So for this fall, that means the event would occur on November 20th, a Saturday. And usually, the timing of it is such that the lighting of the tree downtown in the Pocket Park and the 4th Street trees will all take place during the event. So the time slot we have lined up is from 4:00 PM until about 7:30 PM that evening. This year, we do have one add to the traditional programming that I think is really exciting and, and stands to add a great tradition to the event, hopefully, and that is a parade. So we have many parades in Tongonoxi, and they're all loved for various reasons. This one is intended to go, what I think is the opposite direction of all other parades. So there's one sort of unique fact. It's going to gather at the Tongonoxi Public Library, and I'll, I'll demonstrate on the screen here briefly. Sorry, just pulling it up. So the map here, which I apologize for how much is going on, shows the setup for the parade, starting in the parking area of the public library, 4th and Shawnee, and then it progressing east along 4th Street, passing the Pocket Park and the tree, and allowing traffic to disperse off of Main and 4th Street to go park in various areas. So this is counter to the route like the Homecoming Parade and St. Patrick's Day Parade and many other parades typically go. But I think for this year's event, with the goal of depositing people down near the Pocket Park to participate in person, that's, that made sense for a lot of reasons. Really briefly, to kind of give a quick note, too, and we'll put this out in other advertising in the future, Diane Brethauer has agreed to be the parade coordinator. So if you or a youth group, a community group, church, anyone want to participate, her contact information, her cell phone, and her email is listed in the agenda packet, and we'll put that out on other advertising about the event. and we'll put that out on other advertising about the event. We'll have traditional food and beverage options with the addition of waffles, which I think are popular with Alberto Yalick's food trucks. So we're excited to add that aspect. The theme was TBD, but as of today, Santa Claus is Coming to Town has been announced as the theme. So I think that'll help us as we work towards decorations and programming and other items like the mayor's reading a story to coordinate with that theme. And it'll go nicely in hand with the parade. One thing that we wanted to illustrate to the city council and not ask you for a decision tonight, but just to be thinking about, is safety precautions. As you remember, last year, we held a contactless drive-by tree lighting event with completely remaining in cars as the priority for our visitors and participants. This year, we are hoping that conditions will allow a more in-person, impersonal experience at the side of the Pocket Park in that general intersection of Fourth and Delaware. We are talking about items like moving Santa outside instead of having him in the old council chambers building, as well as looking at social distancing setup for queuing to see Santa Claus or to visit that decorated room, as well as the potential of whether or not to require masks for people admitted into the building as a confined indoor space. Those items, though, we hope to prepare a more strong recommendation for you on in one of the two November meetings, November 1st or 15th of the city council. And they both allow you to give us any guidance you'd like to offer as a policy level for the event plans. But we'll monitor that closely and obviously the risks of COVID in relation to this event's design. Finally, I just want to highlight the group that's working on this year's event. In addition to the mayor and mayor pro tem, we have a strong group of dedicated volunteers that have helped for many years. And as well, I'd like to recognize our city staff from Public Works, Fire. Our new emcee will be Joe Byrne this year, and so we're excited for him to take over that role. And we're looking forward to a lot of things about this year's event. But happy to answer any questions you might have. And feedback you might have is always welcome now or between now and the event.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Council, do you have any questions? All right, thank you very much. I'm looking forward to this. It's going to be fun. Item D, update on city wastewater treatment plant updates project. Mr. Brackovich?
Yes, thanks, mayor. So in your packet tonight is an updated scope of work that was provided by Brian Kingsley, the city engineer with BG. And this is an item that we talked about as we developed the budget for next year, and we allocated about $35,000 to do an overall analysis of our wastewater treatment plant. But what I wanted to touch base on tonight is kind of what's really happening? What are we kind of doing both behind the scenes and as we prepare for this work? And how it relates to things we already had planned for? How a big project like Hills, what changes did it make? So, and maybe talk about, even though we've established kind of a not-to-exceed number, we can probably start some of these components even this year. Just so, but I think understanding a little bit of the calendar we're working with will kind of help frame things. So overall, what the regulatory agency that we deal with here is KDHE. There's a permit that they issue that is the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Filter or System, or NPEDS for short. And so those permits are issued on five-year terms. Our current permit's going to expire November of this year, meaning we're up for renewal. And so that'll run through November of 2026. As we prepped for this fall's renewal, there's certain organic treatment capacities that KDHE regulates. And there's four big areas, BODs, suspended solids, nitrogen, and phosphorus. So KDHE had already prepped to lower limits on, I believe, phosphorus and nitrogen. So even if Hills, a project like Hills, never came into the community or any big project, we were going to have to make some adjustments. However, because we've been engaged with both KDHE and the Hills design team, and we know Hills will be coming onboard sometime '23 or 2023 or 2024, and we know we're really going to design towards the better understanding of what kind of impact they're going to make to the system as opposed to the typical growth we've seen in years past, there's a lot of benefits that come into play for that. One, we get to design towards a system that's really representative of what the community is now and how we expect it to grow for the next 20-plus years. Secondarily, it gives us a chance to work hand-in-hand with the Hills design team of what the impact's really going to be to our system and how they can alleviate some of that by incorporating pretreatment into their project. And so, so again, those are, and KDHE is right in the middle of that. They're working with us on our regulatory needs. They're working with Hills on their design project with their group that they've hired for wastewater treatment. And so I, so what we're proposing to do then is, I think if you look back in years past on our CMIP, we always kind of had wastewater treatment plant upgrades or expansion kind of on that five-to-seven-year window horizon. We're kind of moving that up to more of a three-to-five-year window. But we'll have a lot more clarity of what our actual needs are going to be. And you can make some policy decisions. Do we want to prep for a short-term growth? Or do we want to make a change to prep for long-term growth? And the key component to getting all that started is to do this comprehensive analysis because we have equipment that's in the ground. We have equipment that's above the ground. We have software. And so this is taking a comprehensive look at all of that because our wastewater treatment plan, even though it's still fairly new and we're still paying some debt on it, it's, it's not a spring check-in by any means, and it's probably time to do certain upgrades there. So the touch point tonight was to kind of remind everybody to take that step back. Why we're doing this has nothing to do necessarily with any development projects. It's just time to renew the permit. But we're being cognizant, and I think we're doing a good job of planning, of how we account for the growth that's going to occur within this next five-year permit window. So we don't need any action item, and I hope I didn't muddy the waters or confuse anybody. But I just thought it was important to have that as a touch point tonight. And especially if we do start some of the work now, we can just bill under our normal city engineer hours, but make headway towards, towards that end goal. And again, while we have KDHE engaged as well, I think it's just a better, a better use of everyone's time to move in that fashion. Be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Any questions, council?
No.
And no action needed, Mr. Brackovich?
Nope. We're just planning to keep moving forward on that one. Thank you, though. Thank you for the time on that.
Thank you. All right, item E, consider approval of quote for abatement services at 723 Yoke Street, Yoke Street.
Yes, thanks.
Mr. Brackovich?
Yep, thank you, mayor. So this item, just real quickly, you'll recall that we had gone through a process on a different structure in the 600 block of Yoke in terms of prepping to do a demolition on a fire damage structure. This is in the 700 block, and it's another long-term codes case. We put a memo in the packet that has a very detailed timeframe. But essentially, we, this property went through the city municipal court in January of '20. We had a guilty finding for a number of things on the property, junk vehicles, junk, trash, overgrown vegetation. The property owner filed an appeal at district court. And so during COVID, there was kind of a delay in getting things scheduled. And there was a few missed dates by the property owner that eventually, we didn't get a district court ruling until later in the year, in 2020. And actually, I think it even extended into '21. But the district court also found them guilty of the same charges that the city municipal court did. When the district court found them guilty, the property owner then filed an appeal at the Kansas State Court of Appeals. And in March, they were trying to schedule that. And then here, within the last 30, 40 days, the state appeals court upheld the district court's finding, which in essence was really upholding the findings we had. And then the case was remanded back to municipal court. That case was heard last week. The judge issued abatement orders, and so we have legal authority to move forward with the abatement. The contractor that we selected for the abatement and demolition in the 600 block is scheduled to begin work this week on that project. So we asked them to take a look at the approval, legal authority we had within the abatement that was issued by the judge and give us a cost projection of what they would charge and to clean up this property in the 700 block. And so that's in your packets tonight. It's an overall cost of $3,000. It was a little bit over my authority, but I was ready to do that, award that under an emergency situation because I think we can get both of those properties cleaned up within a short timeframe. And I think the, the, the community and the neighbors in particular should be happy. I know that they're frustrated that the process has taken a long time, but hopefully, the quick outline I just gave, everyone has due process rights, and some people choose to exercise that all the way. And so that's where we're at. I'm recommending moving forward with that with the hopes that we can knock out both of those properties and get them cleaned up in short fashion. And since we had a meeting tonight, I thought it would be appropriate to bring it before you and ask for your approval on this as well.
Okay, council, do you have any questions?
What all is being, being abated here?
So on this property, there's two junk vehicles that will be removed. There's, it's hard to tell because it's so overgrown now. There's two to four flatbed trailers of various sizes that have debris and items stacked upon them, various items scattered throughout the site. That's all removed. The vegetation, dead tree, that'll all be cut down. So what should be left is no junk in the yard, a cut, mowed yard, and then the mobile home structure will remain. And we'll move to address certain issues there with our new codes person coming onboard. And so that, that's what should remain is just that mobile home structure.
Any other questions, council? Bless you. If not, I would accept a motion.
I make a motion to authorize approval of the proposal from Denton Excavating DBA Midland Raking for completion of abatement services on the property located at 723 Yoke Street for a cost not to exceed $3,000.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon. Mr. Porter, will you call the roll for the vote, please?
Ms. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mr. Dale?
Yes.
All eyes, mayor, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Moving on to the city manager agenda. Floor is yours.
Thank you, mayor.
Sure.
I'll present the, the update on this report that we've presented several times earlier this year on 2021 budget initiatives and progress towards completing those. Happy to report that almost exclusively, we've knocked off many of the items on this list, especially in the last several months. We do have a couple that are underway, and so I'll highlight those briefly in more detail. Our $182,000 towards the city share of the county sales tax funding and the infrastructure sales tax that went towards the Church Street Bridge design phase prior to construction next year. We are underway in that. We've completed and worked on with BG some elements of surveying. And then they'll come forward later this year to complete the design cost allocation and the work included in that scope of work to have us ready to begin construction as early as early 2022. We also have $15,000 budgeted to mark crosswalks with thermoplastic that's going to last longer and stay brighter than our previous applications of paint. And this project is actually only not completed because it relies on the street maintenance work for the year being all done. And so as you've probably seen around town and, and recall, we have, over the last several weeks, had mill and overlay and some micro-surfacing activity just kicking off this week in the North Star subdivision. So when that's all completed, our contractor for thermoplastic will be out. And we're also happy to report we're able to expand the scope of that coverage by a couple extra crosswalks because of some unexpected benefits of the 2440 resurfacing project. We also have the city's website redesigned that was marked as underway. We'll mark it as complete in the sense that it's been awarded, and we'll progress quickly towards making progress in that initiative. We also have directional signage. That update is something we anticipate finishing this fall. And that's going to include, again, the addition of directional signage reflecting the historical society's location, which was previously not shown. Our fire and codes combination position is budgeted for next year and is in the process of being implemented. We've posted the part, the full-time firefighter job actually earlier today. So we're excited to see candidates come in for that role. And when it's filled or close to being filled, we'll be able to announce the transitions completed and have that full-time dedicated resource for codes and fire inspections. Finally, if you, if you look on page two of the report, our budget development timeline, since the annual budget was approved for 2022 at our last regular meeting, our last outstanding item this year is to work on the budget book, which we'll be undertaking studiously the next couple of weeks and hoping to get a presented version back to you and printed for distribution earlier than the close of this fiscal year. And excited about all the initiatives that'll be in next year's budget initiative report. Happy to answer any questions you might have or, or comments on the report.
I've got two questions. The first one is a crosswalk painting, and it's down on Tongonoxie Road. I think it's Main Street right there. I'm sure the county's not going to repaint it. You know, because they redid the road, and that one's missing. And then one up farther towards Main Street is missing.
The area that will still have micro-surfacing is along Main Street from the 2440 signal to the intersection with Fourth Street. So the crosswalk that's saved by the pool?
You're going the wrong way.
Okay.
It's the one down, just before, if you're on Main Street and you turn, just before you get to the VFW. There was a crosswalk across there. There's that park on, that parking place on that side. Then you go down, I guess it isn't Main Street. It's the one Gambino's is on. That one there, that was part of the resurface for the county. And I'll ask them Wednesday, but I believe it's probably, we're going to end up painting it. So, being you've got two more extra spots, that's two good spots right there.
That is. I think Kent has to get his identified that as one to, to do. And we will have the vendor do all of ours at once, too. So they'll, they'll take efficiencies of scale by knocking them all out when they're out here.
And I would like to see, and I know we discussed a little bit of budget, but not a lot. We need to review all the crosswalks before school starts every year. This wait until afterwards and all this. It needs to be done before school starts. And I sure wish the rest of the council members and that agree with me, at least on that fact, that they need to be done then. They don't need to be done in September and October. They need to be done before school starts. Nothing else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hempel. Anyone else have any questions? I do want to say thank you to Mr. Hempel. There are several, and it's not to take away from anyone else's efforts on any of these things. But in every meeting I've been in, Mr. Hempel has bird dogged those crosswalks and the, and the Church Street Bridge and made sure that we didn't lose track of that stuff. So thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
You know, I didn't realize they were used that much till I retired. And then, of course, I don't stay at home very much, even though I'm retired. I notice all these people, they use it every morning, anywhere from daylight to sunset. And that's one of the things that we can provide for the community at a rather efficient cost, I feel.
All right, thank you. Item G is the, Mr. Brackovich, do you have anything more for your city manager agenda?
No further items, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. The city attorney agenda.
Mayor, I have no items.
All right, thank you very much. H, mayor pro tem agenda?
I don't believe I have anything also.
Thank you, Mr. Hempel. Item I, city council agenda. Anyone have anything they want to bring up?
I have a couple things.
Go for it.
Number one, I just want to thank Monica Gee for your work on Tongi Days and for all the other stuff that you do around the community. And, and thank you for coming to these meetings so regularly and being a part of. and being a part of, a part of the process.
Agree, agree with all that.
It's interesting to me that back when we were doing these remotely on Zoom, I heard from a couple people that said, "We needed to get back into in-person meetings. We need to get off Zoom. We need, we need to be meeting in person." And sadly, none of those people that said that have ever come to a meeting. And so, I appreciate you being part of, of the process. And second, I wanted to take a, a couple moments just to, just to talk about one of our favorite subjects, masks. I'm a big advocate of masks, a big supporter of masks. I think everybody should be wearing masks. I think that, I understand that there are some difficulties for the younger children. It's hard to find masks that fit their little heads. But I think that for everyone else, I think no matter what their costume, masks are better than face paint. And this Halloween, I hope that, I hope that people wear masks, whether it's Chewbacca masks, werewolf masks. I hope to see some masks out there on Halloween.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Anyone else? Under city, under my agenda, I just included this monthly participation report that the, the rec commission puts out every month just to show you what they're kind of going, what they're up to and how many kids are participating. And I just, that's just for your information. And I have nothing further. So, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Fall in favor, say aye.
Yep. Aye.
All right, thank you all. See you in a couple weeks.